Go ahead and we'll start our meeting. Appreciate everyone being here on this second day of February. It's unbelievable, 2023.
It really is.
Sounds like a science fiction movie back when we were in high school. He said 2023, you know, man. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. As usual, always before we start, we'll ask Brother Goff here to lead us in prayer and please believe it. If everyone would stand please.
We'd like to ask you to remember some families this, in the last few weeks. Hugh Leavins, who worked for us here for quite a long spell, passed away and was buried just a couple of days ago. Keep his family, his wife and family in your prayers. Dewey Baker passed away, I think maybe yesterday. Dewey worked with the city of Trenton Police Force for back in the eighties in that period of time. Also, Don Hicks passed away in the last few weeks. He worked with the sheriff's department through two or three different sheriffs for a long time. I know there are others, but keep these in your prayers and their families in your prayers as well. Let's pray. Dear gracious heavenly father, we're so thankful for the privilege we have of prayer. We're thankful for the privilege that we have to bring our needs before you and our request. Even at those times that they're for a family who is suffering through grief and loss. But we do pray that you would be with them and so many others throughout our county as we know. But father, we pray that you would just continue to bless our county, to bless our, as Evan came tonight, to bless our development, our industrial development. And lord, we just thank you for where we are, where we live, all the blessings that we have that we know ultimately come from you. So lord, we thank you. That being said, that you allow us to be a part of it, to use people every day, lord, in our schools, our governments, our churches and on our street corners, lord, you use people, lord, to bring communities together and make them as great as they can be. So thank you for all those who are working behind the scenes that no one ever knows what they do, but they do so much for our community. Bless this meeting tonight and everything we do that in some way brings glory and honor to you. In Christ's name we do pray, amen. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners. It takes place at the same, same place in time, first Thursday of every month. Proper notice this meeting was given their legal origin. The Dade County Sentinel has been posted in our hallway, the administrative building. This time I do need a roll call. Mr. Lowery.
Here.
Tartline.
Here.
Goff.
Here.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
And the chair is president, we do have a call. Okay. Anyone want to come up and talk to us tonight about anything we've discussed tonight or anything? Feel free to, we give you some time, okay? If not, we'll move on. Mr. Lowery, you want to start with your, your committee report?
Yeah, before, I'm just tickled that I made it this far tonight. So by this time last week, I was sitting here totally lost. I did suffer a stroke and been in the hospital actually the last, the first three days of this week. So, but I have AFM and hopefully the medicines are gonna take care of everything and, and I'll be good to go. They told, they told me I'm one of the lucky, one of the lucky ones that have a stroke and it not paralyze you in some way or kill you. And for me being paralyzed, I think I'd rather pass on, but we don't get our choices about that type of thing. I'd like to recognize Alex's case because he immediately recognized that I was having a health issue, even though I didn't, didn't recognize it. And then my old buddy Rodney Ross, when, when you come back to you and you're back there and they took me back there in the rain, when I kind of tell you, when you see familiar faces, it's good, it makes you feel good, it makes you feel more that you're gonna be okay. So Rodney's been a longtime friend and Mike Engel, who's on the ambulance, who was on the ambulance, since he's, he's worked with my son, I've known him for years and then from the hospital where I work. Carrie was on the phone with my wife in that middle line. But I'm better and I'm good now, so. But our 911 calls were, we had 203 EMS calls. We had 261 fire department calls, fire and rescue. I'm always gonna add the fire and rescue because they, they do as much rescue as they do fire, so. The sheriff's office, which includes Trenton, the Lookout Mountain, the Georgia State Patrol, were, they were at 3,367 for a total amount of calls for the month of January would be 3,831. Lot of calls for our little system, yeah. And I was one of those unfortunately. Our E911 addresses for the month of January were seven and our addresses and this, and it was seven days, so that's seven addresses, E911 addresses, just for this month. Okay, now I did want to mention also that, since I wasn't able to mention it last meeting, that we need to be ready for weather emergencies. I mean, what tonight was, Alex mentioned about the weather emergencies in our, during Christmas, it was a rough time in Wildwood in the north end of this county because we were just about out of water for three or four days right during Christmas. Of course, that makes it worse when you're having your family there and everything too. But I was getting calls from people saying, you know, we weren't prepared, not taking any responsibility for themselves whatsoever. But, I mean, we've, we've preached and begged and asked people to have emergency food supply, emergency water. I mean, we gave recommendations where you should have a gallon of water per person per day, five days, non-perishable foods, so some things can't be helped. I mean, we, we could be ready, the water company couldn't be held to blame. I mean, they had fires that they had to fight during the cold weather and some, some frozen water pipes. And the north end just got low and it was hard, hard to build that water back up real quick and people continually to use it, so. And I live on a hill and when I run out of water, my, I have city water, but I had to pump it on it to the top of the ridge, so. So it's a big deal, but everybody needs to take a little responsibility and don't just point the finger at the water company or Dade County Commissioner or the emergency services. Be ready for emergency as much as possible, weather emergencies and any other, any other emergency, so. The internet on the north end is going good. There's been a little, a couple of snafus, a couple of complaints, but 99% of people are just tickled to death that we're seeing pipes going in the ground and lines being run. We're one, one little area right there in, in the, well, actually the state line in Wildwood, the Creek Road area in the Pope Creek Road, no Birmingham Highway. We don't, we haven't had internet ever of any kind. So yeah, we're like, we're right there close to Chattanooga, people on the west side of the US 11, they've had, they've had it. They haven't had fiber, but they have had internet. And so we're appreciative of the Trenton Telephone Company and my, my neighborhood and my community, just we're tickled to death that they're making the progress that they're making. And we want, and we've tried to be extra thankful for those guys because a lot of them are from out of town. They're down here because the weather's too bad where they perform from to do what they're doing down here. So Trenton Telephone has pulled in some out, some out of town contractors and so we're, we're really thankful for that. Our children need, need this internet and, uh, last but not least, I'm not gonna do it tonight because I'm not prepared for it. Like I said, I spent, I spent Sunday, Monday and Tuesday in the hospital with my heart. They, they have got it figured out now, so hopefully I'll be, be back up. They told me it would take about 90 days to repair the brain damage and I told them it might take me a little longer than that because I had more brain damage than normal murders, but, but the last night, I, I had talked to Kathy Page on Friday. I actually talked to her clerk, Kathy was out and I haven't got, and I've been sick, so I haven't got back with her. But I'm gonna do a presence and presentation next month. Hopefully that'll address title problems with our properties because about two years ago, I went, I went to Kathy and I asked her, I said, you know, I'm seeing these commercials on TV about title lock, locking your titles, protecting your titles to your property. People are somehow doing scams on the internet and whatever and they're getting access to our property titles. And all of a sudden the sheriff comes up and says, you gotta move, you don't own this. So, and I talked to Kathy two years ago and that just wasn't the case and, but now it's gotten more advanced, like everything, it's got more advanced and the Superior Court Clerks Association, is that right Ted's Association? They have got a program now and it's to help protect your titles. So I hope to have that in their pretty good report next week and maybe get the Sentinel and the other papers to get it into paper, get the word out, there is a way to help protect your property deeds from being hijacked or being hacked, yeah, so.
Because there is, it has been, it has happened, you know, and you don't even realize it happens. And Lamar, we talked about it, you know, and it's just, you know, you, you might go 10 years or five years or whatever and go and you got property maybe and you live away from here, you don't even realize it, but someone's actually came into that and absorbed your identity and they could actually, if it's free and clear, you know, if a bank, different if they own the money, but they could actually wind up owning your property and you not even know it, you know, and have clear title to it. And I know you say that can't happen, well, it happens down in the former, I mean, he's done a lot, he's done a lot of research on it. It's, it's scary kind of.
Things have changed that fast in two years because two years ago I talked to her about it and it wasn't heard of, especially in Dade County. But now, as you can see, I bet she's put that up, there is a notification system. And so I hope to do a little better explaining of it next week or next month and have a little.
You're gonna have her time too, I reckon you.
Yeah, if Kathy will come, that would be, that would be.
That'd be good if she would, yeah.
But then maybe get something put in the Sentinel and in the independent, get the word out to people that there is a way to help protect your property, so. And I want, last but not least, to thank everybody for their prayers and their phone calls because it was appreciated very, very much.
Okay, your report, Mr. Tartline.
Okay, at the sports complex, Michael Bradley was over sports or over soccer for the rec program. He has stepped down and they have placed Sarah Hickey over it. So right now we've got spring soccer, softball and baseball signups going on. You can go to our website and then you can click on, scroll down, there's a, they've formed an association, I'm assuming. You can go to Dade Rec Association, it gives you the dates of the signups and what it costs for each sports. If you, if you go to the sports complex and the gates are locked going out to the soccer fields or even to the baseball fields, softball fields, they're locked because of the amount of rain we've had. The fields are saturated, so we've, it's gotten better in the last three or four years as far as drying up in time to play and practice. But if, like, like I said, if he's got the gates locked, just stay off the fields to keep us from having to work extra hard to get them back into the shape we've got them in right now. We spend a lot of money on conditioner and safe coat to get the fields to where we can play on them in a timely manner. As far as electrical inspections, I want to say Stacy said we had done 24 electrical inspections this month. So it just amazes me every day that the amount of electrical inspections we're doing. That's, that's basically one a day if you take off the weekends. If you're, was talking about all the work going on in the county. If you go off with Hell's Gap, pay attention, they are closing some of that down. They may be down to the bottom now, highway 11, they have shut it down some to one lane. Creek Road, where they're running the fiber optic, like you said, if you ain't been through there, pay attention because they are setting their equipment up in the road and their trucks. I've been there a few times, they've not had flagmen. I mean, they've got their signs up, but there's nobody flagging traffic and they've been setting in curves and stuff, so just pay attention on that. There's a lot of work going from, from Creek Road, highway 11, and then back up to Hell's Gap, Morgan Ridge. There's a lot of trucks and equipment in that area, so just keep that in mind and slow down too for them working there.
Yeah, that's true. That's, in my report, you know, that's something, it was brought to my attention, you know, a week or two ago and I've talked to actually the, we've got a subcontractor with Georgia Power here. They're gonna be here probably around two years and it's a county, kind of a countywide thing. They're restructuring a lot of their lines, going underground a lot of them. So it's kind of starting, starting in the north end. And of course we've got, just like our cable, the Palmetto people, you know, that's the beginning of it, you know. But the power, the power people, we've got a lot more people in here working than the, than the cable people right now or, or fiber optics people. So this is not something that's gonna go away next week or in a month or two. And as it moves into your community, you, you need to really be aware of it because they're, they're a, a large, a large group, especially the, the power people, those trucks. And once they come in, they do try to buy, buy, buy all the rules and all, but like Phillip said the other day, he called me up, you know, coming around and it was, had a roadblock with no, no flagmen whatsoever. But anyway, what I'm getting at, if you do have problems or complaints, you know, call, you know, most people's got my number and, and you can call, call me and I can contact those people with the fiber optics either way, but you can call the phone company because they are working directly for the phone company. All of them are, Lamar's that, you know, he's, he's commissioner on that end. And like I said, they're gonna be, it's gonna take a while for them to get out of the north end and move on as far as the fiber goes. So just, you know, don't, just don't be bashful about calling, but we will give you the number you can call, you can call us and, and we'll, we'll get some results, we'll find out what's going on. So anyway, the, I had a meeting out on 136 there with, with the DOT there, it's been last week. You know, we've talked about this and Melissa, she's been on board with a lot of safety issues, you know, there. Some accidents that's happened on the straightaway there where Geneva's restaurant, oh, it's 136, highway 136, FA and, and GDOT is soon, as soon as the weather permitting, they are gonna double line that through there. And we've got an application that's going in there also, what they do to change a couple of driveways right there. It's gonna make it safer going in, commercial driveways, going in right there past the restaurant into Canyon Quick Stop. And GDOT's gonna work with those people on that and it'll make it safer about coming in out there. So that's, you know, if you don't travel that way, it's probably not a big deal to you, but a lot of people do go that way to 136 if you're going with that, so. And we've got so much more truck, truck traffic on that road, it's unbelievable, you know, coming east and west. Well, uh, Mr. Lowery mentioned when, the other night, if you didn't live in the north end of the county, therefore, you don't realize what it's like to be without water or a, an extended length of time. They were, the tank was down, almost to the bottom. Water Authority was pumping all they could and it was not building that tank up. Uh, this was when we had the real cold weather. Most people were having their water running, letting, letting their faucets run. And also what contributed to that was actually, you know, the froze lines that actually when it thawed out, people, you know, I mean, a lot of people, it was colder than it's been in many years and a lot of people had lines they didn't think would freeze that froze. But anyway, also the issue is actually volume and pumping water. And, you know, the water company, they're right now going through a revamp stage. They're, they're out there, we, I serve on the GFA board and we're, we're helping them on some things that they've, they're applying for and some money and they're, trust me, they are handling it. They're not sitting there spinning their wheels. Uh, it's not only on the north end, but on Lookout Mountain and places. So there's a lot going on right now that's kind of behind the scenes that they're working on. And of course, all that takes funding and they're going at it, they've got their engineers involved in it. They're going at it in a, in the right, right way. And so we're gonna see a lot of changes in our, in our structure, our infrastructure of water in the next, you know, few years, next couple of years anyway. Uh, that's like the intake, you know, they, that's something that's, it's gotta happen, you know, and that's where we pull our water that we drink out of the creek and, and that, that's all, we're gonna be revamped, you know. They've got engineering done on that, so. Anyway, that's, that's another thing that's happening in the county. I did spend some time in the last couple of weeks with Mr. Miller that was here tonight. I had a couple of meetings with him, interesting meetings. And we, we are limited to what we can do, we do not set state laws. We, we cannot override, you know, but we, we'll go to bat for you, I mean, all we can. But, you know, the, they'd be like us changing speed limit out here on interstate to 85, we can't do that, so. But we, we will help, we'll try to help him all we can, but there's a limit to what we can do. And so, but I always understand that you can come to us and, and we'll help you. We'll get you in touch with our state senator and our state legislators and that's the people that kind of the phone you go through to get to, so, anyone. I, I know some of you didn't understand a lot of that tonight, but, and, and I felt it was right to bring him here and let him talk to us and get that off his shoulder, you know, and so, you know, anyway. Uh, our storm shelters, you know, we had that little incident here the other day and weather and all and we did have the two that we have completed, they were, they were used. We had several people there in South Dade, we had the one at the full fields there, the head start people, you know, they had a scare, they brought their children down there, you know, that, there and we had several other people. And plus we had some people downstairs, which is a, we use that as shelter, so. Anyway, that, that, it was good, I mean, it really, and, and everyone there was very appreciative. And I thank more the word gets out that we do have them and thank, thanks to Carrie and Alex and all. We do get that out, you know, on our website and, and by other means too. And if you don't know and don't understand, you know, really where you need to go, if you don't want to stay at home, you need to go and research that, where, don't wait till something happens 15 minutes before we get direct winds or get a 480 coming in here or whatever, you need to have it in your mind. Okay, I'm gonna get in my car and I'm gonna go this way, this way and, and know, you know, what's going on and what to do, just like, you know, Phillip and we were touching on that, but anyway. The, let me see what else I got. Okay, and also you probably, this is something that's very unusual for a commission to do. I've only, you've only done this one time since I've been commissioner in, in a lot, a lot of years, and that's to abandon a road and actually give that back to the people that own, you know, these land beside it. But we did one, it, the one that I remember was Haygood, Haygood Road out on Lookout Mountain. That did have a couple of property owners, or three, that it, that it affected, but there is a process and, and we went through that, they all signed off that. It was not, it was, didn't go anywhere else but a dead end and that's why that happened out there. This was a little bit different. And like I said, I don't know how it became a county road about years ago and how it was paved. I mean, I don't, you know, because really what it is, is a long, a long driveway into a farm that went to a house, you know, and, and it happened to be Dr. Philer's house. So that's something that they came to us and asked to abandon and it's to the best interest of us and you to do that, honestly.
You know, we did the lifestyle, Wildwood Lifestyle Center and then there.
That was one, yeah, that's been, yeah, that's right. And we did that, they came to us and asked that road, they wanted to take over the maintenance of it. That only goes to that hospital there and they have, they were having issues too with people coming in at night and that didn't need to be there. And so there again, that was, it's to the best interest of all of us and them to do that, so. It's kind of unusual, you know, we'd rather take over or accept roads and then, but we have accepted some, so we kind of make up for the mileage, you know, the ones we take. I'm not gonna wait for them, but anyway, just I want to explain that to the people out there and.
We just accepted one over at the golf course, not.
We did, that's right, yeah, and so, so it kind of goes and, and goes and comes, but. Go ahead, Mr. Goff, I know I jumped.
You sure you're through?
I'm through. I'm, I, that, I don't, I didn't mean to jump ahead of you, but while we were talking, I just wanted to.
Melissa, just to say.
I wanted to bleed right in with Mr., yeah, with Mr. Hartman.
It's a lot of good information.
It gave you long, long enough to think about what you're going to say.
Well, I, I do have, I always talk about splash and of course, the fact that we had a couple of requests for here tonight from Sheriff Vehicles and also the IDA to consider. It's good to report that for this month, it was back up about 4,000 over last month of $223,611. So it's climbing its way back and this would be November dollars, I guess, dawn coming in. So, so they lag about two, so we still, we will see the December dollars next year, next month and see if they make a difference. There's a gentleman that's been in contact with me because I report on what's going on in Atlanta. Nobody can keep up with that. They're in about day seven or eight of the 40 days. Lord only knows what's happening down there. But you can keep up with it online or on Friday, they have a, kind of like a, not a Zoom, but you can get in and listen to what's happening. It may be something that affects you. As with anything, I know there's two different sides to every issue. I am retired from a trucking company, 30 years. I understand the need for trucks, everything eventually that you get, whether it's your groceries, bedding, clothing, something gets on a truck somewhere. And most of that, if not all of it, at some point gets on a county road or a city street that are not made for a lot of the traffic that's there. And we have grown accustomed and, and that's fine, we have what we have. But what has happened since the pandemic, the governor gave a variance to the trucking industry to be able to haul about 9,000 more pounds on each truck. Well, they, like a lot of people, got their lobbyists to go back and say, we need to make this permanent and go on up to about 90,000 pounds. The problem is they, they're going to spend a lot of money, this is their third year for them to try to get this. Trucking is important, believe me, I draw a pension check from it every month. I know how important it is. But our roads are not made to continue to put heavier weights on them and more weight pushing a vehicle and all that that goes along with it. What, Billy, about 75% of the roads counties maintain or something like that. Billy, are you thinking?
I wasn't exactly what was the question.
It's about 75, 80% of the roads that counties maintain, cities and counties, in, in the state of Georgia.
Yeah.
So what he is asking is for people to get, just me, to help make people aware of this because those lobbyists are going in and they say it's for the timber industry, nobody else. But you know and I know and the American people know, it will not end with them. It would end with concrete trucks, steel trucks, whatever, hauling more and more and more. And our roads just don't need anymore. And now so many are being diverted to come over Lookout Mountain and all these out of the way places. Morganville Ridge Road, all these that we talk about all the time, they're certainly not made for even that traffic. But that's where GPS, if there's an accident on interstate, we'll send them. And they're going to have to find that way to get through. So I'm just making you aware, those are the kind of things that are hitting the legislators early in the session so that they can work on them. And if you're interested in it either way, you call our Senator Colton Moore, Representative Mike Cameron, and you say, I'm for it or I'm against it. But I want to tell you, we're just not made to handle any more increase in the trucks for the safety to the public and everywhere that they have to go. That's, that's my take as a former truck driver, so take that for what it's worth. Also, I was going to Griffin, Georgia for a week, week before last, they had five tornadoes in one day. And I was down with, not with the county, but with Georgia Baptist Disaster Relief, a great organization, cutting trees off of people's houses. Some of the houses are not going to be saved, but we did all we could do. Keep those people in your prayers and your thoughts and run on over into Newnan, on down around the Augusta area and, and different places that, that they were hit by all these tornadoes. Ted was talking about the use of our storm shelters. So they were really fleeing that day and thankfully there was not too much injury or loss of life, but one is too many when it comes to it. Last but not least, if Carrie, if you'll bring that up. Jennifer Blair could not be here tonight and she wanted us to report on a little thing that, that took place. If you look at this picture, it is the Town Creek Trail, that is down behind our courthouse from Wolverine Drive over to Highway 11. And that is the final, the last phase they just done. The goal is, I think, to hook it all the way up to Sittens Gulch and then eventually be able to get on that hiking trail and go up to Clouding Canyon. But they had a workday Saturday, the next one shows where the Dade Sentinel had run it on the front page for a cleanup. People to just come and spend a few hours or whatever with them and, and do a little work. And then finally, or on number three, you see people gathered, about 40 people that morning. Lamar was there and he and I may be getting too old for that kind of thing, but we were there to help. He stayed longer than I did, but had about 40 people showed up and ready to work. Not all of them were for Trenton, Dade County. They just want to see that kind of thing flourish, that kind of thing for people to have a place to go recreate and walk and trails to walk on. The next slide simply shows down in, if you notice down on the bottom side, that's just a little recess. That will be a little pooling area for all the water that comes off of the courthouse. Now we'll go into that area, little basin to catch it. They're planting all kinds of trees, I don't know, probably 75 or 80 little, some kind of trees for that kind of thing to make a little runoff, then that water will filter itself going into the creek. And it won a road away at the creek because there are some erosion places right there that are going to be pretty rough if not taken care of behind that already due to fallen trees in the creek. The next one is just where they see the pile of brush that we got out, some of the stuff that was in it. Pretty good showing for one day's work and then some of the different things that they're planting, Chinese privet, Japanese honeysuckle and more, and things that also that they took out the invasive plant. So Jennifer just wanted me to say thank you to the county and to some of you who may have been there. Thanks to our fellow commissioners for what we did when we give them the, us and the city working together to let them use that property to make that. Limestone Valley, Stephen Bonico was there to talk about the plants and to kind of steer them in the right direction as far as USDA and EPA. And a special thanks to everyone who came down, volunteered and contributed work for this event. So if you see Jennifer, thank her and the group that did that because it, it does enhance the beauty of our city a little bit more and there's still more to come. So that's all mine. Chairman.
I need a motion to adjourn. It's baffling, go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to start with my regular and then I got a few, well, before I do that actually, I'm going to mention soon as that came up is that we still have anybody that's eligible for a septic tank repair up to 40%, which is, I took advantage of it, it's awesome. I think it's on the website, any of that information. So look into that, it is, it is wonderful. And then, let me pull up my. And then we had the, with the rain and the cold, work orders more or less have been checking all the roads, repairing all the signs, trying to make sure all the signs are up. Everything should be repaired at this point. Of course, they, they fall and, and go as soon as they get fixed. Snow and, and ice equipment trucks are ready to go. Hopefully we won't need them, but I'm kind of thinking so. We had 140 work orders for the road department and we had eight, 864 tons go out this month. We are still kind of reviewing and reamping a few things at the transfer station, the computer system. We're really digging in and looking at that. We're overviewing the recycling. There's some things that we need to work on, on both sides. So we're, we're reviewing all that and really looking into, to what needs to be done better or what we're not doing. And it still needs a lot more research. Then we have, should have a slideshow ready to go for Dade County Senior Center and the transportation. So this, where, where it's located, down by the sports complex, phone numbers, when it's open. And then just kind of, you know, it, it's, there's a lot going on there. You know, call, find out what, you know, what days are, things are happening. There's a lot going on, it's a really good, good activity place. And also in January, they serviced 1,742 mills, which is pretty awesome to the area. And then, which I've been kind of looking into this a little bit more and trying to get some, some numbers. I wasn't as familiar, I don't know if a lot of people are. But there, you know, the transportation first, you know, anybody could use it. You just need to call and make sure that you have a request or, or a reservation. There's a couple, what is it, a day or so ahead that they need to know so that they could plan it because they do. Let me get to the next one, which this, these are numbers for this past year, correct, Carrie? Yeah, for the whole year. So, so this is pretty awesome, these numbers. Total trips, 10,288. And then you could see, you know, the mi, the miles, the hours and then confirmed trips and then wheelchair trips. And then the, some that are non seniors. So those, those numbers are pretty awesome, I feel like. And then I think the last, which was not said, was that we, we have been down in dispatch and I think there was somebody that was finally hired. So that's a, a big deal because we had a couple sick and then I think there was one hired.
Yeah, we're still short, they still, yeah, they're still hurting.
Yeah, yeah, so that's it for me.
And also mentioned too, we did, you know, they were finishing up the concrete, you know, there.
Yes, yeah.
That's a big deal, it would have been a day for years.
It's a huge deal, huge deal. And also too, I talked with the state, which Lookout is mainly state roads. You know, going across there is the main, so they did, they're doing a much needed cleanup around Covenant with all those drainage issues. And then they said that they would be coming over and doing some down 136 too. So, and I will definitely get on them for some of those signs back in, in the Head River area. I know that they're not, they're kind of leaning some, so, so I'll be chatting with them about that.
Okay, anybody want to add anything?
I would like to add on the septic tank grant. They were out of money a month ago. There's eight more months left on the grant, but then they received some more funding. So I don't know how much more they got. So if you're interested, you may want to go ahead and get on. Because last time they waited till the very end, was trying to get the people to add on. This time they were eight months left on the grant, but they were already out of money. So if you're interested in that, you may want to.
Need to move, yeah.
Move quickly on it, yeah.
Ted, you mentioned something about, we was trying to get a dialysis here in the, in the county, have you heard?
That's been about, yeah, we've been working on it about a year, you know, it's just something that. Don't have anything really positive, it's something we're still working on. What Lamar just said is we have a lot of people that actually go to dialysis in the county and not just in the county, but in our little territory which goes into Alabama. And I've been trying for almost a year now to try to work with a group there to get a clinic here in Dade County, you know, to save from going all the way into Chattanooga and all. So I don't really have anything really, you know, positive or negative. I mean, it's still kind of in the works, so we'll keep up on that as it goes along. Hopefully by summer we'll maybe have some really positive news, I hope, you know.
Yeah, well, they, they, I mean, even on here, there's, those numbers are on here.
Oh, yeah.
Those are even people that are needing, needing to drive, you know, have somebody drive them, so.
And that's not even counting the people that drive, they don't even, they don't do the vans.
Right, right.
So it's a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll move on, move down to Mindy Hayworth with our library and come up and talk to us.
Thank you, Commissioners, County Executive, Lamar. Very happy to see you back here and glad, glad you're doing better. We've all been thinking about you since last month. I just want to go through some of our January stats at the library. Circulations, that's how many books we moved, that includes our digital circulations as well, 3,204. Our door count in January, 2,250, that's a lot of folks. We had some really big programs, very popular programs this month at the library, so we're pretty excited. Computer use, 295, 496 printer pages, we sent 60 faxes. Our study rooms, I think word has gotten out on our study rooms. 25 people used our study rooms over the course of November. The meeting room was used twice, we added 56 new books to our collection. And someone had asked me about how many out of state patrons do we have in the library? So I looked that up, we have 626 folks that pay out of state, our $25 out of state fee to be able to use our library. All right, let's see. So some of our program highlights, we collaborated with Clouding Canyon and one of their naturalists, Jerry Wallace, and they did a back program. We offered it to both homeschoolers in the afternoon, early afternoon, and we offered it to after school program for kids that were in school. And we had a total of close to 60 participants between the two come to that back program. It was, it was pretty exciting, we had a lot of, a lot of activity there. Let's go back one more, I wanted to show the other one. Our Pokemon League, that also saw 58 participants this month. It's offered twice a month and we see all age ranges. You can see active participation. We pair some kids that are a little more experienced and better with brand new kids so they all learn how to play. And I just like to, you know, highlight that the Pokemon game, it's critical thinking skills, it's collaboration skills, it's reading skills, it's math skills, all in a really fun game and a really great collaborative environment. So second and fourth Thursday of every month, we do the Pokemon Club. In the Kids Club, we do a different STEAM activity every month and that's on the first Thursday at four. Lego Showdown is the third Thursday of every month. It's always a challenge where we put different challenges to the kids where they've got to compete and we give little prizes out for that. I also want to highlight, oops, the children's iPads, we just got those up. Those are preloaded with different programs specifically for children in the early reading area. So we're excited to have those up and you can see they're already being put to use. And before we go on, I, I had yesterday, after I'd given my whole presentation to Carrie, we got something in the branch run that we've been waiting on. They are, they're called Launchpads. So it's one of our new services that we offer. These Launchpads, they're preloaded tablets that you can check in and out from the library. There's no internet needed for them, but they are preloaded with educational reading apps. So Read Aloud, Read Aloud Storybooks, Phonics, it's reading help, all the way from ages two to 11. There's five different levels on those programs. So please come by and check out some of our new Launchpads. Those were provided through one of the grants that we were able to get through the State Library Association. Okay, our teen space hours, I announced that last month. Every Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday from 3:00 PM to close, we sort of cordon off that area and we put some snacks, we put a little Keurig out there for them with hot chocolate and different things like that. And if you'll go to the next slide, one of our teens came in and said, the snacks made my day, this is magical. And that just shows some of our snacks and stuff like that. So we're really glad to offer that and we have seen an increase in our teen program over the course of this year. So we just want to encourage any teens that want to come out. Special program that we are going to be having throughout the month of February at the library, it is a collaboration between the Georgia Commission on the Holocaust and the Georgia Library System. We, our branch gets to host this exhibit through the month of February. We're hoping it, supposed to be here today, but didn't come. So we're hoping that it arrives tomorrow through the courier system. It's a, the, it's a banner display exhibit where you can come in at your leisure and read the banners. It's highlighting World War II veteran William Alexander Scott III. He was a part of a segregated battalion in World War II. He was a photographer and he captured the liberation of Buchenwald. So it's going to be a really exciting exhibit, we're really proud to be able to host it. So please come check it out at the library. And in collaboration with that, we're going to have an educator and historian come and do a special presentation on the historical context of World War II, oh, sorry, of the Holocaust in World War II. How did it happen? She will be at the library on February 16th at 5:00 PM to give us that special presentation. So please come down. I'm sure there's always a little bit of information that we can learn about that. So we're excited to have. So we're excited to have her. Well, this happened tonight and I think we, I think Sam told me we had thirty part, thirty participants, kids come plus parents come. She did activities, STEAM activities on constellations, moon phases, and rockets, and it was very well attended and we were really happy to see all those families come. This month, our Young Creatives is going to be Henna Art with a teen volunteer, Ivy Nakley. I hope I pronounced her name right. She's going to be coming and doing, um, Hannah Tattoo, which is sort of ancient art form, using Hannah paste that she prepares herself. So it's very safe and she's excited to share that with us. I think she goes around to some of the local markets and has a booth. Um, so we're excited to have her. Here's some of our fifty-six new books added to the collection. Please come check out our new book display. These are some of our, um, children's books. You can see a lot of nonfiction. Nikki Giovanni is one of my favorite children's poets. I love her and she came out with a new book titled, "The Library." So we added that to the collection. The Science of Light is super cool, all about bioluminescence and things that happen in our world with light. As always, please check us out, our Facebook page. We like to put all of our announcements on there. Go to Instagram and stay updated with what's happening. I kind of wanted to mention something that Lamar brought up as well. Um, we are working on a cyber safety program that we're going to be having in the month of March. So I'm super excited to hear you talk about that in particular and I might get with you to see if that can be part of, um, the program that we're going to offer in the evening. We're hoping to get, um, seniors. They are particularly susceptible to being targeted. Uh, my parents just got scammed. Um, they target seniors, they come after you and they play on your heartstrings. They find you on Facebook and, um, we're going to have somebody who works in cybersecurity come and do a program for anyone that's interested in learning how to protect yourself on telephone scams, internet scams. They target Facebook, they target, um, PayPal, and I would love to get some of that information on those title scams as well.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll check the page.
Yes. So, um, just wanted to throw that in. That's going to be happening in March after daylight savings, cause it'll be in the evening and we want everybody to make it home while it's still light out. So I'll have more on that at next month's, um, next month's meeting and let you know exactly when that's going to be. But you can always check our Facebook page or C H R L dot org for information on our calendar. Any questions for me?
Still have the food box at the library?
Yes, the little drive-by food box that's in the library. We also have the, um, the care closet for, uh, donation items for clothes and things like that, that we can donate to kids at the schools, the care closet.
Hope to have a list next week or next month of all the places that have blessing boxes or-
That would be great. I know we do get phone calls asking, we get phone calls a lot at the library asking if we have a blessing box and if there's any others around. So, all right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your-
Okay, good report. Thank you. Ms. Sarah Dyer. And Ms. Laura Beth Cunningham.
He'll get you, just hang in there.
He'll get used to it.
I'm pulling that up, but while I am-
The big bucks in the back, back there now.
All the, all the blessing box locations can be found on our website at DadeCounty-GA.gov.
Good job.
Thank you, Carrie.
I'm computing real later and I've been there five minutes.
Well, mine didn't want to pull up earlier. All right, you can, so I'm starting off with the middle school. Um, I've really enjoyed the older kids. I usually get a lot of little kids, but I do like the middle school age group. Um, this month I taught them about bridges, bridges. Um, there's seven types of bridges and we discussed how they're built and what they're made of and their different designs. And then I challenged them to make a bridge out of jelly beans and toothpicks. And surprisingly, they did really well. Um, a lot of them did cheat and they went, they used their phones and they looked up, uh, how to do it. So I was a little disappointed in that. Um, next time I will not allow their phones, but they did enjoy it and it's, it's kind of hard to, you know, keep their attention, but I think they really enjoyed that. Um, my homeschool meeting this year, we talked all about apples. Um, the majority of our apples come from Washington State. Um, there's a lot of different apples. We made an apple craft and then we tasted several apples that I went to the store and bought. Um, so I always have a really good turnout with my homeschool kids, so I really like that little club. Um, our next meeting is going to be on the fifteenth and then I'm actually going to have them do the bridges lessons too, but I'm going to let them use marshmallows. So maybe that'll be easier for them, cause they're a lot younger. Um, our monthly craft night in January, we made an owl out of a paper plate, um, and they painted them and then they're all holding them. They're so cute. I love these little craft kids. Um, our next craft will be on the seventeenth and we're going to make a little Valentine, little, um, turtle thing for their parents. Um, Sarah's going to talk about this too, but we did postpone our bullseye challenge. Um, our shotgun team this year is three times the size of what it usually is. Um, for the past years, we've had nine to ten kids. We have twenty-four. Um, we have had to make adjustments, um, to accommodate that many kids. So we did postpone it to make sure that we can get everybody involved. Um, and then Sarah's going to talk a little about it.
Yes, um, and so with that, we try and cover some costs within the program, um, from fundraisers that we've done, um, but they do pay a registration fee as well. But this is a very costly program. You can imagine, um, guns, ammunition, clays. That's what they use to practice constantly. So we do have this fundraiser coming up. It will only work if all of you, your families, your friends, your neighbors, come and spend five dollars. That's what we're asking. So if you come and you spend five dollars, you get to select one shotgun team member or coach to challenge a law enforcement officer. Make it real fun. Get the two different law enforcement officers to try it, or two shotgun kids. Um, so what they'll be doing is BB challenges. So this is typical of the BB competition. So they will take ten shots at a BB target. So it is not a shoot-off, um, but we will have that going on. You can, you can pick, um, who you want to challenge. You can spend more than five dollars if you'd like to challenge a couple different folks. So please come out and support that. Again, February eighteenth, so this is the last you'll hear about it publicly, um, besides our, our Facebook page and the newspaper. So please come out and join us on that Saturday. We did host our Magic in the Mountains Winter Classic. This is a youth livestock show for 4H and FFA exhibitors. We welcome exhibitors from all across the state of Georgia or anywhere in the nation. So when we host this event, we do get exhibitors from all across, um, Georgia and the southeast pretty typically. Um, so these were all of our sponsors that made it happen. We do shows like this twice a year, this one and the one on Labor Day weekend known as our State of Dade Show. So we rally up, um, various sponsors and donors who can help make it possible to give back award premiums in the form of cash to these students exhibiting their project as well as different awards such as banners and buckles. So here's a couple pictures. I actually slacked and capturing pictures, so these are from folks that sent them into us. Um, so you can see, there's actually a few of our Dade County 4Hers in those shots as well, but it was a great turnout. We had about ninety head of ewes and does shown by thirty-seven exhibitors, so about a hundred and fifty folks showed up to this. Our State of Dade Show, Labor Day weekend, go ahead and put on your calendars. Every year it's Labor Day weekend and it is double the size, so it is huge. And we did have kids from all across the southeast. Our Dade Greater Gardener Series met in January. We are coming to the end of that twelve-month series. So those that are registered, the next program is February sixteenth and we will have Stephen Bonico talking about NRCS options available to homeowners or home gardeners. The next Tri-State Beekeepers Association meeting will be Monday, February twentieth at the Ag Center. And then the Tri-State Cattlemen's Association meeting will be the next night, Tuesday, February twenty-first, but it will be over in Walker County. We rotate back and forth. Um, so join us at that one. We will have the state, um, Georgia Cattlemen's Association, excuse me, I'm sorry, this one is in Dade County. I apologize. I forgot, we are just in Walker. Yes, so we will be in Dade County, so just come to the Ag Center if you'd like to. We will have our state executive vice president of the Georgia Cattlemen's Association provide a statewide update, provide, um, a Georgia Beef Board update. If you sell cattle, you're familiar with the checkoff. That is where a dollar goes back into promoting beef to consumers. So you'll get an update about where those Georgians' federal dollars have been going. Any questions?
Lot of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good report, good report. All right, let's move down to Ms. Sandy White. She's our President/CEO of Alliance for Dade.
Good evening, everybody. And Lamar, we're glad you're back as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Couple things, um, to start off, we have, um, our Small Business Development Center workshops, uh, webinars that are coming up this month. Um, February seventh, um, how to be a vendor in the film and entertainment industry. So if anybody's interested in that, uh, that is on the seventh. Uh, value-added, um, producer grant workshop, that's for agricultural producers. Uh, also certif- certification, uh, contracting and teaming, how to start, um, if you want to work with the government on contracting. Um, that is a procurement, um, seminar that's online on the eighth. And then Marketing Monday is, uh, manager, social media in thirty minutes a day. Um, that's on the thirteenth. So all those are webinars that are available to you. Just contact us at the, um, Alliance and we'll be happy to give you that, those links and that information. Also, um, we are looking for some help at the Alliance, at the Welcome Center. Um, we're looking for a Welcome Center manager. Um, unfortunately, um, we lost, um, Margot and, uh, she, she is moving back home to, uh, near Nashville. And, um, so anyway, if you, um, we have information posted on our, uh, website and our Facebook, um, and if you know of anybody, just send them our way. Uh, also, we have a promotion, uh, in February that, um, you can celebrate, um, a local business, uh, and send them a Valentine. So it's called Virtual Valentine. We have information on our, um, Facebook page, uh, in our newsletter and, um, uh, you can see me, I can ch- give you the link as well. Um, but if, if you want to, um, send a Valentine to your favorite business and tell them how much you appreciate them, um, and there's a simple form that you fill out and we will, um, print out the Valentine and hand-deliver it. So, um, this is a promotion that's going on through the twenty-sixth of this month. So, um, show the love to your, um, to the different, um, businesses and, um, we'll be happy to deliver those. Our January stats, um, we had four residents come in the Welcome Center, uh, in January, uh, twenty visitors and twenty-four calls. And then a couple things coming up. Um, this Saturday is the, uh, Tri-State Humane Society's, um, Bingo and Chili Soup Supper. Uh, that is a fundraiser for them. Come out, uh, have some fun and, uh, support the, the Humane Society. Also coming up is the personal firearms classes that, um, Uncle Laura's outpost is, um, starting. That date has changed to, uh, February thirteenth for the first class. And then lastly, um, we are, um, taking the tourism dollars and, um, promoting the county. This is one of the first ads that we're doing. Uh, this ad is, um, in the digital, uh, Georgia State Parks Guide and, um, I am happy to report that this, um, our ad will get a lot of exposure. Uh, typically that digital guide gets, um, thirty-five thousand to forty-five thousand, um, page views a month. In January, uh, which is when our, uh, ad went in, um, they got a hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-two page views. So a lot of people are planning, uh, to go to state parks and so, um, we want them to know what else, um, besides our wonderful park, uh, what else is available in the, in the county as well. So, um, the QR code will, uh, direct them to the tourism section of the website so they can get further information of, about the, um, availability of lodging and dining and shopping, that kind of thing too. Any questions?
Any question? Okay, good report. Thank you. Donna Street. With our Historical Preservation Commission.
First, I want to thank y'all for your continued support of the Historic Courthouse Project. It's moving along. We're thrilled that, uh, we've stopped having to take that on like, like a backpack. It's, uh, it's moving along and, and everybody's going to be happy with the result at the end. We are also talking about possibly getting with, uh, Blevins Construction and seeing if, sometime at the end of this calendar year, that we might host some walkthroughs for folks to see what's, see where we are, see what it looked like before and what it's going to look like now. The other project that the HPC is going to take on in con- in conjunction with the, uh, Dade County Historical Society is a cemetery association. We had some training, the county hooked us up with some training from the state and one of the things that, that we were trained upon was, um, that the city of Atlanta has done a cemetery of association. And so I'm going to get in touch with the lady from down there and we're going to do some training for us and some community training. But if you know anything about our cemeteries, and you all do, it's that by the third generation in these cemeteries that don't have perpetual care, nobody knows what to do. There's a cemetery issue right now that y'all are helping us, helping one of our, uh, Historical Society members deal with. And, uh, I'm just saying this to the public so that they will know that if they get a call or a letter from somebody about a, coming to a meeting about a cemetery association, that is what it is about. We are trying to figure out a way to help these little cemeteries get some care. The, uh, this is a personal family note. My family is the owner of, uh, the Redding Wallen House on Pope Creek Road. It is one of the only dog trot houses left in Dade County and it is a two-story. And it was beginning to fall down and my uncle Johnny was, Johnny Wallen was smart enough before his death to have us create a, we created a nonprofit organization. And if you drive down Pope Creek Road, there's a new porch on it. It is not falling down anymore and the porch was off for a while and now it's, it's been improved. And it'll take us a long time, cause we're going to finance this ourselves, but we're going to do some of the stuff too. Um, we're going to have some activities there in the future. Two things from the Historical Society. We are, instead of taking hikes this year, we're going on tours of homes. And we have been invited to the, um, Havelo Calendar Forrester property on, at Head River and Steve Forrester is the person who is, he's one of our members and he is the house that was there that, I don't know, there's probably, of all the families in Dade County, there's probably more people came to the Forrester line than anyone along. They had, they had male heirs instead of just females, like a lot of families have, but we're going to do that at the end of April. And then in, in the fall, uh, early fall, Josh Lewis, who is, if you remember him, Mr. Ed Wilkie's grandson, has bought the house on Highway eleven that was the, uh, Victorian house that was brown and is now white. He is a veteran who has moved here and has become involved in a couple of organizations and he was, he's going to host a tour through that and the public will be invited to both of those. Because these are, these are the kinds of things that we want people to do with their old homes and, and we are still learning about things, about ways to help people preserve things like that. So if, uh, if you are interest, have an old property and you're interested in it, one of the things we want to count in this survey that we've written the grant for is things like springhouses, old bridges, and Indian, Indian or Native American burial grounds. And we know there are quite a few in Dade County and a lot of them have been documented, but not counted in our surveys. So, um, thank you. Does anyone have a question?
Any question?
We keep plugging along and we won't quit until, well, we probably won't quit. Thank you.
All right. Good report. Thank you, Dawn. Okay. Didn't get me, my man off of what we're doing, Dawn, he's just talking about history. You know, it's something that, you know, we don't really realize where we live at historically, but there's a lot here in this valley, you know? Our ge- our archaeologist up in the north end, what's his name? He was in the office about three, four weeks ago, a month ago and we were talking about a lot of things in the valley and about the dig over here at Mr. Vice's. I'm going to make this quick, I know y'all. But he told me, he said, you know, and, uh, he'd give anything to be able to have access to the properties from where they live at, all the way down to where Crawfish Creek and the Rising Fawn area is at. And because he said, there's not just one or two, but there's numerous burials, uh, Native American burials between there.[1753.86] it's, it's kind of, you don't think about it driving down the road, you know? But it's here, you know? Mr. Townsend. Give us our financial report, please.
Okay, as of January 31st, 2023, the general fund has a balance of $2,510,053. In investments, we have 1.4 million, so that's a total of $3.9 million in the general fund or access to the general fund. Federal Asset Fund, U.S. Treasury, zero. Sheriff's Special Fund, $8,938. Drug Abuse Education Fund, $7,746. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, $28,516. Victim Assistance Fund, $1,349. Jail Fund, $6,722. Federal Asset Fund, Department of Justice, zero. American Rescue Plan, $1,917,935. Accommodations Tax, $194,524. Employees' Flexible Spending Account, $19,756. And Payroll Account, $57,133. Remaining in the 2015 SLOST, $124,034. And in the 2021 SLOST project account, $246,582. And the proceeds account has a balance of $1,675,711. Looking at our revenues for the month of December, ending December 31st, we had a balance for the actuals received, I should say, was $843,494. We had budgeted $855,414, so we were short a little bit of $11,919. Year-to-date, we have collected $8,704,84. And we had budgeted $8,452,982, so we were in excess of $247,502. For the same period, ending December 31st, 2022, the actuals expenses were $1,098,913. We had budgeted $1,065,762, so we were over budgeted $33,241. Year-to-date, we spent $6,920,279. We had budgeted $7,66,956, so we were under budget by $146,677. Budget attained at this point, with six months ending, of course, will be 50%. Revenues attained are at 65.34%, and expenses attained were at 51.02%. Looking at SLOST and for the month, as earlier reported by Commissioner Goff, we have collected And under local option sales tax, we have collected $223,611.14. And then you'll see the next report, the SLOST tracking worksheets for both new and old. The only thing on the old note is, of course, the fire departments. We're still waiting on them to spend some money there, and it says they have a balance of $90,887, so we're getting closer. It's right under $100,000, so that's, that's not too bad. And then the last report in the series here is for the tax commissioner. And with total budgeted amount of $5,495,500, revenues attained so far has been $4,314,863, and that is right at 78.52%. That concludes the report.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, or...
I would like to tell Mr. Townsend, I like to report better because I did stop on Lost instead of SLOST. $298 is a whole lot better than $223.
You got it.
They're the same penny, but the CD gets 20% of the other is the reason for the difference.
Yep.
So I like yours better. Thank you very much.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, I'll adjourn the motion to approve our financial report by Mr. Townsend. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is read.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hartline, second it. Call a vote, Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Mr. Hartline.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
And Chair O'Chis. Motion carries. Okay. Robin, you got anything tonight on legal matters or...
No.
Okay. Don't have any unfinished or new. We've covered pretty much everything there. The reading of the minutes of our last month, month's regular meeting, and any special call meetings will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies of the minutes or public records and available for view in our county commission office. Minutes are included in the consent agenda and will be considered for approval under a new business. Mr. Townsend, if you'll go over our consent agenda, I'll adjourn the motion pertaining to that, please.
All right. We have the approval of the agenda as presented, approval of the previous meeting minutes, the review and approval of the personnel status report, the American Heart Month proclamation for the month of February 2023, proclamation for Arbor Day, which is February 17th, 2023, a proclamation for FFA Week, which is February 18th through the 25th, 2023, proclamation recognizing Trenton Dade Optimist Day, which is today, February 2nd, and the Dade County EMA Severe Weather Preparedness Week, which is recognized February 6th through the 10th. Let's see, the request for proposal results for the Dade County Sheriff's Office, 2023 Ford Explorer Four-Wheel Drive was awarded to Crater Ford for $38,327.88. That does include a five-year powertrain warranty, which did cost $1,845. The, also in that resolution, whatever would be the need for the bumper striping, lots and radio and accessories, had a maximum amount of $10,000. So that's a total expense of $48,327.88. The Dade County Industrial Development Authority requests for funding to acquire land for future industrial and commercial expansion and development for a total of $350,000. Let's see, we have the Republic Services Incorporated. It's a notice of rate adjustment, as reported by Mrs. Monica Mosley, and that is tied to the Water, Sewer, Trash CPI index. For, it's 4.37, but we have a cap at 4% that the county will begin paying. And then the Historic Courthouse Restoration Project, the report of Mr. James Blevins for the monthly update and recommendations therein. Approval of the fiscal year 2022 financial statement is presented by Henderson, Hutcherson, and McCullough, the CPAs of Dade County. Resolution R-11-23, approval of a lease agreement between Dade County, Georgia and Family Resource Agency Incorporated for four acres of land to continue Head Start Program. It's a three-year lease with two one-year auto renewals built in. Resolution R-12-23, Georgia Environmental Protection Division, the STAR Program, which is tire amnesty event, filing of an application to hold the event at the Dade County Transfer Station May the 6th, 2023. And that's in Memorial, Memorial of Allen Bradford. And Resolution R-13-23, MOU authorization for the Historic Preservation Commission to make application for certified local government grants. Resolution R-09-23, a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia by and on behalf of UGA Corporate Extension and Dade County for the provision of a cooperative extension service and personnel in Dade County. It's option B, I believe is the one. And then abandonment of a county road, which is Owenby Filler Road, has ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purpose is served, and this authorizes the county attorney to issue the legal notices as required by law and the legal organ for a two-week period. And also, there'll be calling of a public hearing, probably 5:30 or so, 5:45, whatever, at the next regular meeting, I guess would be March the 2nd, 2023. And we have a resolution R-14-23, a disposal of surplus county property on govdeals.com, which is 2003 CAT excavator and two, I'm sorry, and three salt spreaders sold in one line.
Okay.
That's a mouthful.
That's it. Any questions? Okay. If not, I'll adjourn the motion to approve our consent agenda as presented. They have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Now, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Bradford, thank you. And call a vote, Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Mr. Hartline.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
Chair O'Chis. Motion carries. Okay. We don't have any executive session tonight. Any reason? Anyone want to add anything, commissioners? Anything?
No.
If not, I'll adjourn the motion to adjourn our meeting. I have a motion. They have a second.
Second.
Okay, call a vote. Lowry.
Yes.
Hartline.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Chair O'Chis. We appreciate everyone staying with us tonight, and we really do. And be careful, it's wet outside, and it's like it's going to continue to be wet through the night, so appreciate all of you.